All right, good evening and welcome to the City of Sunbury Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. It is March twenty fifth, six thirty P M. Would you please join me in a moment of silent prayer and the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. I did want to start with one item that is related to the State Route Three commercial development that had an informal presentation at our last meeting. There was a gas station proposed and a Valvoline proposed. I wanted everyone to know going into this couple hour meeting that that project will not be discussed this evening. What I've been told by staff is the developer is planning on holding a public meeting, public as in developer led. I believe it will be April sixteenth, that's a Tuesday, time yet to be determined in this
Six P M.
Six P M in this building on this floor.
Yeah.
All right, this is not a city sponsored event. I think this is a way for the developer to get feedback. What I can tell you is we have shared the feedback that we've received, I personally received also that, you know, the feedback that I've heard from individual commission members and push that information back to the developer. So that won't be discussed tonight. If you're here for that, you're obviously still welcome to stay. But it looks like we do have a line outside and we may have an occupancy issue as well. Rob, how are we doing on total count?
Five, six.
But thank you for being here.
That helps me with the people outside.
All right, there are two public hearings on the agenda this evening. I'll list them first and then we'll dive right into the first public hearing. The first public hearing is the Sunbury Land Company LLC rezoning. The second one is Kintner Crossing Amendment to Approved Plan. And what we're going to do is we are going to open up the first public hearing for the Sunbury Land Company LLC rezoning. I believe we need to swear in.
We let, we need to take a roll as well, just to guess. Mayor St. John.
Here.
Now, Mr. Goaknow.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Here.
Ms. Crawford. Mr. Stotteman.
Here.
All right, six present, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to open up the, the public hearing for the Sunbury Land Company LLC rezoning. I believe the first order of business is our court reporter is going to actually swear in anyone that wishes to speak. But legal counsel, would you mind just laying out the ground rules for that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is D J Young. I'm acting solicitor tonight for the City of Sunbury. This is a public hearing. Everything is going to be recorded and transcribed. Our, our court reporter is Marilyn Martin. She needs you to speak clearly into your microphone at the podium. And we can only talk one person at a time because she can't type down when multiple people are talking at the same time. So when you come up to the podium, you will introduce yourself by name, full name, address. And, and then when you speak, you're speaking to the commission. Nobody in the audience should be talking at that time. You should not address anybody in the audience. You address the commission, the planning commission. So, and then after that, we're going to swear you in here in a moment. Anybody who wants to speak should stand now. Or with respect to the Sunbury Land Company's application, including the presenters. Raise your hand if you're already standing, if you're going to present. We have one person, two persons, three. All, all of you who are going to be sworn in, please stand right now and our court reporter to swear you in.
Do you sound like swear or affirm that testimony will give you the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mayor, I have a handful of exhibits to put into the record.
Please.
We have Exhibit A, which will be the zoning application, including its attachments. Exhibit B is the public notice. Exhibit C is the list of mailings and addresses for notice purposes. And Exhibit D will be the standard for, the staff report, excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Accepted. All right, I'd like to invite the applicant up to the microphone to give an overview of the land to be rezoned and an overview of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Aaron Underhill. I'm with Underhill and Hodge at eight thousand Walt Parkway in New Albany. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Sunbury Land Company. We're here this evening to request a recommendation of approval on a rezoning into your new L I limited industrial district designation. With quite a bit of property that's included in the application, over seven hundred acres, in fact. Did want to point out that roughly one half of that is actually the A E P holdings on the substation there on the outskirts of town. And when we as the Sunbury Land Company had to annex, look at the property that we looked develop, which is the other half. We needed their participation in order to assist with getting us the relevant contiguity we needed under state law to annex to the city. And so they're part of this application this evening as they fit neatly into the L I district as public utilities are permitted. But for our part, the Sunbury Land Company is interested in developing the balance of the property with the other uses that are allowed, some, some of the other uses that are allowed under your new code. We're also an affiliate of the New Albany Company, which has had great success with the New Albany Business Park. I think some of you have had the opportunity to go and view what they've done out there. And maybe others will be going in the future. But thousands of acres out there have been developed with and master planned with uses such as Intel, but also others such as Amazon, Google, and many others that are more light manufacturing uses. And it's been a great success story. What you get with the New Albany Company and the Sunbury Land Company is someone who is in it for the long haul. We will look to, once we get this zoning in place, work with you all. We've been working very closely with your administration and your council to make this an attractive site for development of employment generating and real estate tax generating uses. We see some great potential based on my location here. A lot of what Sunbury has to offer in terms of professional zoning staff, professional administration. We're working through utilities and getting those to the site. And we look forward to, as a part of this process, being back before all of you with the development plans as they become available. And also we intend, we anticipate that there'll be a plating of a north-south road through this property at some point that will obviously require a lot of interaction and back and forth with you all and your engineers. And so we can be multiple opportunities as, as our opportunities on the private side arise to create some economic development opportunities for us to be before you and have a back and forth. So it's, it's interesting because in a situation like this, we're, we're asking for a district that you all as a city have created. We're just asking to apply those standards to our site and to follow those rules. So unlike in a P U D or something like that where we may, might be talking about individual development standards. This is a situation where we just want to apply your code as it sits and apply it to our property and let that be the catalyst for us to be able to market the property and to bring you development opportunities as they arise. So with that, I'm happy to answer your questions on what the protocol is, whether it's public comment next, but happy to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Underhill. All right, we're going to open it up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would wish to speak to the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the Sunbury Land Company LLC rezoning? All right, all right, we are going to close this particular public here. We're going to start over in just a second. All right, next, I'd like to open up the Kintner Crossing Public Hearing. This is an amendment to the approved plan. We're going to go through a similar routine where we hand it to our legal counsel to give the ground rules for the public here.
Is there anybody who's here to speak on the Kintner Parkway project that did not hear the instructions that we gave a few minutes ago?
I could just clarify, it's the Kintner Crossings development.
My apologies. Yeah, Kintner Crossing. So, okay, everybody who would like to speak on that one, if you have not been sworn in already, please stand down. All right, and the court reporter will, will swear you in.
Do you sound like swear or affirm that testimony will give you the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And I have some exhibits to present today. We have Exhibit A, which is the application. Exhibit B is a general development standards, P R D kind of thing. We have the first round of public notice, Exhibit C. Exhibit D is the first notice of the addresses. Exhibit E is the revised one, revised public notice. Exhibit F is the revised address list, the updated list, I should say. And then we have Exhibit G, which is the staff report. And H is the summary of the modified development plan.
All right, the commission accepts the exhibits. All right, we're inviting the applicant up to present on Kintner Crossing. Two from the applicant will be presenting the CD. Right.
Good evening. My name is Molly Gwynn. Address is two Miranova Place, Suite seven hundred. I am the attorney for the applicant, D R Horton, this evening. And present with me also is Joe Looby, Senior Planner from E M H and T. He's here to answer some of the technical questions regarding the submittal, as well as Jack Montino, the Division President of D R Horton, Dave Dozer, the Division Vice President of Land Development, and Andrew Dyer. We are here this evening, as the staff report notes, this is an existing planned residential district. It was approved on or about early twenty twenty-three. And what we're really doing here this evening is just making some slight amendments that would be typical with more of a final engineering review and approval. There is a great deal more detail here than you might be used to seeing with a standard rezoning application. But we felt it was appropriate to come and present these amendments and we are seeking hopefully a recommendation for approval. So if you can flip to the third slide. So the primary changes, and these are detailed in the staff report, but I think the primary changes that this board will have questions on is that we do have a townhome product that is present. You can see it on the site plan. And we have about a hundred and seven of those townhomes. And these were previously done as one parcel. They were not individually platted lots. We are seeking to do these as fee simple platted lots on private streets. And the primary reason for that, again, there's no adjustment to the design. There is no adjustment to the product at all. We are still fully committed to the same architectural standards and all of the detail that was previously approved with the underlying rezoning. We would just like to do these as for sale townhomes on individually platted lots. Again, we do have a full H O A that's maintaining all of these. This is maintenance free living. And so that's the, the primary first change. The second is the removal of the access to Cheshire Road. And that access was shown on the southern boundary of the site to the southwest. We're actually proposing the access to be off the future Kintner Parkway extension. And one of those accesses is a temporary emergency access with the other as a permanent. And then the right in, right out at the entrance to the development on the north side. So a slight adjustment and realignment of that, and we believe that to be just more efficient and better generally for the traffic flow. So if you'll just, if I can have the next slide out. Okay, this is the plan right here. It's going to look very similar to the plan that was previously approved. Again, it do show two access. One is emergency and temporary nature of right in, right out, and then the elimination of the access to the south on Cheshire. Again, this is eighty-one single family homes, no change at all to the design standards that were approved with the underlying rezoning and a hundred and seven townhomes. We are anticipating doing this in two phases instead of three. Phase one, we're looking at about thirty-nine single family homes and forty-four townhomes. Phase two, forty-two single family homes and sixty-three townhomes. And you will see the phasing plan on the next slide. So again, slightly, slightly quicker. The other changes that I wish to highlight, and these are highlighted in the staff report, again, we are not changing the use here. We are not changing the density. We are not changing the number of units here. We still have the same units, the same commitment on the design standards. But we have moved this to the townhome product being on individual fee simple platted lots. We have removed the condominium form of ownership, the access. And then the retention ponds were previously a little bit undersized. So we had to go ahead and resize those in order to be appropriate to handle our stormwater. So there is a slight adjustment in the sizing of the retention ponds. And again, that would be typical as we would move through final engineering, we would expect to have more detail around that than we would have with the zoning. We've also slightly adjusted the location of the common mailboxes. And again, we have been in discussions with the fire department. They have approved via correspondence that has been provided both of the proposed accesses to the future Sunbury Parkway extension. And I, I expected there are questions. One thing I do want to just speak to briefly because I, I know there were some questions about this. The open space here, the plan currently breaks down the difference between common open space versus the additional open space. And if you go back to the plan, if you don't mind, thank you, it's a little hard to see here. But the light green on the plan that is around the, the southern boundary of the property as well as the retention pond, that is common open space. Excuse me, I'm sorry, the light green that surrounds the retention pond and the southern boundary, that is additional open space. That is five point eight seven acres. In terms of common open space, all of which is going to be maintained by an H O A, that is seven acres, twenty percent open space. It does meet the requirement of the P R D code. But if you aggregate them together, we are at slightly, you know, greater open space than before. We're at about a total of thirty-six percent if we take our common open space and then our open space that's shown along the southern boundary and the retention pond on the plan. So again, would just like to stress that this is an existing P R D zoning. We just, we have some additional detail here in discussions with your very professional planning staff and thank you to them for all their work on this. They asked that we present this to this commission in order to obtain their approval as well as to the city council. That's why we're here this evening on, on this amendment, and I'll be happy to take questions as will Mr. Looby. Thank you.
I think we're going to open it up to public comment. Anyone from the public that wishes to speak with the commission regarding the Kintner Crossing Amendment to the Approved Plan? All right, we will close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Not bad. All right, next up. It's like a track meet. Second, second or third heat, commission review rezoning, the Sunbury Land Company LLC anticipated, anticipated process. Does the applicant have anything else you wish to share with the commission? Okay, thank you, Mr. Underhill. Staff, prepare to report.
Yes, so the report, we just go over what is around the current parcel in question. It is a lot of single family homes and farm homes around the ten or eleven parcels in question, excuse me. There was a revision going from seven hundred eight acres to seven hundred six acres, as I'm sure you guys saw. And then just looking at the economic development of the standards that would be allowed in here, as you guys know, we looked at L I, they came in and we kind of, we approved that. So we know what we're looking at here, but just as a refresher. Scientific research, development, training facilities, technology related facilities, industrial flex uses, light, light intensity, production of goods and manufacturing, and then related light industrial uses with what could be used in this area. So nothing, nothing too major there. Do you guys have any questions on the staff report?
No questions on the staff report. Thank you. All right, let's open it up to the commission for questions for the applicant or staff. Comments? Any questions from the commission? All right, I will say that we did intentionally, that the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council intentionally accelerated our process to create this zoning district. We took some of the lessons learned from, you know, communities like New Albany. We, we looked at the type of development that would be needed to diversify our tax base. And our previous codes just didn't allow that type of development. And so thank you, Mr. Underhill, for being here, for being the first applicant, and I think this commission is ready to take a vote.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning of the Sunbury Land Company LLC.
I will second.
Second by Mrs. Miller. Discussion, roll call.
Mayor St. John.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Goaknow.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mr. Stotteman.
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford.
Yes.
Six A's motion approved.
Thank you. All right, next up, we are on to the commission review amendment to the approved plan, Kintner Crossing. Does the applicant have anything else they wish to share with the commission? No other, no comments from the applicant at this point? All right. Do you have additional comments you'd like to add?
No, we're just happy to take any questions, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Gwyn. All right, we are on to the staff report.
Yeah. So as Ms. Gwyn mentioned earlier, we were talking about open space. So one of my, one of the things I was looking at with that was the open space. So as you said, like common open space comparison, we went from, I think, seven point four down to seven in the current plan. But taking into account the additional open space that they said, as I mentioned in my staff report, we were looking at that southern boundary and that northern boundary that were included in both of those. And the southern right now, as you guys currently know, is a ditch and the northern is a, a screening or mounding. So I don't know how much use that would get. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. We were looking at this, that while it does count, those are the current uses and based on the plan, what they would become. Based on the going from townhome or going from the condo to the townhome, we don't really have any kind of code that regards to townhome or any, like lot coverage, any kind of specific zoning codes that relate to that. So I would kind of question the applicant more with that, like how exactly would that work? They kind of went over it a little bit here more, but just my interpretation of the code would be townhomes. The townhome building itself would need to cover the parcels as we look to move forward with this. Rather than, as it was mentioned in the application, looking at the townhomes individually, covering that whole subsection is how it was mentioned in that. So just based on my interpretation, I would take it down a little bit. It does look like it would still be approved that way based on lot coverage. But just wanted to put that in there as well. As Molly mentioned as well, there was no changes to any of the architectural standards in this, which I think is a key point as Sunbury is looking to keep up the architectural standards. And then Lot forty-nine, I also would, would question a little bit just based on the emergency access. So in Reserve E, that is counted as open space as well or common open space. So just how that'll be used while it's still being an emergency access for the fire department was another note of mine. But those were the main notes I had. Did you guys have any questions on the staff report?
Any questions for Alex on the staff report?
Did we know why they chose to take out the Cheshire access?
I would pose that question to the applicant.
I could speak to that. The review will even continue. So as Molly said, after the plan is approved, we were engaged by D R Horton to begin our putting around the road, and we got pretty far. And we quickly realized that that access has a, a stream crossing associated with it. And as we did our analysis, that crossing was, was going to be substantial to a point where it didn't even bridge. I mean, it just, it's a very tight corridor. As you know, there's quite a bit of water flowing through there. And if we put the wrong size culvert in there, it would back up and be an issue for the adjacent property owners and who knows what else upstream. So we started looking to alternatives to, to cross that and really it is just cost prohibitive. And it was only for secondary access and for emergency. And that's why we have changed the plan now to have a second access coming, coming from the east. Which would, by the way, I'll add, before that second access at Cheshire would have been in section two. And we would like to see that second access after about thirty lots or so. So now that we've moved it to the east, we'll have a second access in our first section, which, which I think is better from a, from a fire safety standpoint as well.
And I'll jump on the second access point. Can we maybe pull up the exhibit and take a look at where you're saying it's going to connect into Sunbury Parkway? Could you walk us through?
Yeah, that's kind of. It was on tab four.
Yes.
Yeah, and then it has a.
Well, go down to, you're not having the name of it here.
That's what you try to. Maybe it's another one. Six of fifteen at the bottom. Oh, yeah, okay, that should show it sufficient, right? Will this get you there?
Go down to tab five. Look at the, the content of tab five. Go a little bit further, we'll try. Second access, C S, complete. Yes, thank you. So the one question on Lot forty-nine, all right, it's up to you. We'll hold off on Lot forty-nine with this scenario until Sunbury Parkway is built, until the second. With this scenario until Sunbury Parkway is built, until the second access. Permanent second access is done and in order to allow for enough room to get this access up, I have. So that, that's why that's.
What's, uh, what's street D? It's look, it's listed as street C on other exhibits, but I see it as street D on here. Where, where do you intend to go with that road?
That's a, a future public road, that, that is applicable to the plan then that is approved on your head. And that goes to the outlots that are along Jerry, provide the second exit for that.
And, and my concern with this particular access point, I know the fire board, or the, excuse me, the fire department approved this. Those two access points are a hundred and forty feet away from each other. So you're talking about, I mean, if there's an emergency in that building. Blocking the access, nobody can get in or. That's, I think, my concern. When I think emergency access, I think of, one way is blocked. The fire department needs to get in another way. So, I, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying from the cost perspective.
Hey, I understand your saying too, and keep in mind, this isn't a permanent situation. This isn't just until the parkways constructed and from now that full second access. Definitely on to the, to the north side, so, uh, and we do have a letter from VGSP approving this scenario.
And just for emergency access only by, uh, be, for access for emergency vehicles only again until. The rest of the road is finished, so.
You asked me to keep this in mind, so I'm gonna ask you to keep this in mind. We, we have a project going on on the east side of Sunbury. Because a neighborhood is completely detached from the rest of Sunbury, the gardens. And what this is doing is literally recreating that issue when you don't connect neighborhoods. So this will be against the commercial sector. These are single family homes, these are town homes, but it can't connect to other neighborhoods. There's a neighborhood. There's three neighborhoods just south of this particular property. That we're saying you have to go along the Sunbury Parkway and down to Domigan Road. Or you have to go down Sunbury Parkway Cherry Street and go back on Cheshire Road. When, and I thought, some of the feedback that I had asked staff to provide back to you was. This access point to Cheshire Road was a critical element for us. And you didn't take that feedback. You said it's cost prohibitive. I would say it's the cheap way out. And that, I mean, we're just getting started. Uh, you know, the list of changes are substantive and. Um, you know, I'm just, I'm just one person on here, but that access point, I would say is critical. From a safety perspective, but more importantly, connecting neighborhoods. But if we want to, uh, go on or you want to think about, if that's, you know, uh. Somewhere we want to stop the presentation, we can do that too.
Perhaps it would be best, yeah, yes.
My name's Jack Montina, I'm Division President, D.R. Horton. And, um, five fifty, Pla's Parkway, Suite two hundred, West Channel, four three oh two. It's my understanding with this southern access that you just mentioned, as far as the neighborhood connectivity. Was also a temporary access. And that was to be eliminated once the secondary access that. Mr. Luby just referenced to the north and to the west was constructed to the parkway. So we were of the impression that both of these accesses were to be temporary. So, again, when we talk about the lesser of two evils, or, or the lesser of costs. It was more prudent, understanding that they were both temporary, that both of them were ultimately coming out. That it was more prudent to go to the north and to the east than it was to connect to the south. And, and, uh, work with the drainage in that location. So, again, we had met with staff, we had met with the, the engineers. And we were of the impression that both axes were temporary. This one has a lot of water and a lot of drainage to contend with. If you could go another route, go the other route on a, and, and again, on a temporary basis. What I hear you saying then, Mr. Mayor is, you want to see this connection permanent.
That's right.
That's not what we were under, that's not what we understood from the original zoning and the original plan.
Understood. And we are reopening this, I mean, this is a zoning amendment where. You're asking the commission to review and amend what was already approved. And I think what we're saying is, this is somewhat of a negotiation right now, right? Is that fair? So if, if your interpretation was it's temporary and my interpretation was it's permanent, I think that's where we're starting. And if, if we can't get beyond that point, I know we have, you know, six, or, excuse me, five other commission members here. That have more concerns around open space density, increasing the size of the private street, public on-street parking, location of mailboxes. And, and we're ready to go.
Perhaps it would be best for us to fully understand everyone's concerns and then request a tabling so that we might go back and work on those items.
I, I want to be clear though, I asked staff to provide this feedback. Did you not receive the feedback on the, on the mailbox location? Those, either that was minor, right? On-street parking and this Cheshire Road access point?
Uh, we have been working with your staff, we understood the mailbox issue. We did not understand that the perception was that the Cheshire Road access needed to be permanent. Perhaps that was just a breakdown in communications. I did not understand that from my.
Would it be possible to make a pedestrian connection, say, to the west to that future? In lieu of making a vehicle connection, just any site point?
Spent about sixteen hours reading these exhibits over the weekend, so we, we had the staff report on Friday. And, uh, I assume everybody spent quite a bit of time on this, and I don't want to commandeering this particular. Uh, piece, more than I want to answer on the fly, is this acceptable? Because I think we still have wood to chop. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair.
I'm gonna open it up to the rest of the commission.
Well, since I started the question on the Cheshire, I thought it was a permanent, myself, uh, Cheshire. I'm not as concerned, uh, I'm interested in hearing some of the other comments from the, uh, commission. But I'm also not, uh, in love, I'm not married to that it has to be Cheshire. As long as there's a connection to the other neighborhoods. So if you could come up with a different idea, then that parcel or that section, as long as it connects. That would satisfy me.
I think Cheshire Road is the only connection to the other neighborhoods.
Might come up with that great idea.
Yeah, as somebody who lives in a disconnected or the disconnected, uh, neighborhood. I definitely, um, think there needs to be some, some sort of access. Um, my concern initially was the emergency access, and I, I wasn't on planning and zoning before, so I didn't. Don't know the temporary versus permanent, uh, but I think. That permanent access is a priority and, um, again, people need to be able to. Go between the communities safely and easily.
Anyone else on access?
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, I think it's all valid points, um. I mean, there's definitely some more discussion to be had. Obviously, I don't think that's going to be a resolution tonight. I, now, I, I'm gonna go a little off the, the Cheshire Road for a second. I was, I'm just seeking some understanding just because. Um, and maybe this has been said and I missed it, but the change from condos to townhomes and the platted, platted lots. What was, what's the reasoning behind that? Why, why the change, I guess, versus just keeping the, why is there a, a request being made for the change?
Yeah, this is a product that, um, is very desirable in the market to have for sale townhome product. Um, and we noticed that everywhere we work, the code is not really reflective of a designation for the sale of fee simple. Uh, platted lots on private streets for a townhome. Uh, and so that is, that's the reason for the change, you know, these could have been, um, with the single plan, you know, potentially. Potentially rental, uh, we want to do this for sale by owner, we find that there's a demand in the market for it. Um, and so it's just, just to, it makes it a little bit easier for us to sell individual units as fee simple platted lots. And I'll let you speak to that as well, yeah.
Yeah, great question. One of, as you can see just by the design, the lighter shade of yellow over the green. The property owner of the townhome would own not just the four walls within the unit itself or to the driveway. They would own, it's almost a zero lot, um, type ownership. It allows for much easier third party financing for the borrower. Either conventional borrowing or FHA borrowing, for vehicle borrowing for that. When you establish a condominium, therefore, the condominium association owns the exteriors, owns everything else. And to apply typically, those buyers are required to either pay cash. Or to secure non-conforming finance from some type of financing institution. Until a select percentage of those units or homes have been sold in that condominium. Very, very onerous on the owner, very onerous on the developer as well as the banks. Much simpler process in the fact that you do own your unit in the zero lot home. However, the common, the, the, the way the bridge they got between the two now. Is that you establish the HOA over all of the properties. So all of these homes here, including the single family homes, as well as the townhomes. Would all be mowed and maintained by the HOA. So you own the exterior, easier, simpler financing mechanisms that are made available to the buyers. Less as far as cost in terms of insurances, the individual owner has their own profit, their own homeowners insurance. And, uh, it's, it's a, it's a much more, it's a much simpler process and less onerous on the, on the buyer.
Thank you.
In regards to the emergency access that you're proposing this evening. Do you have permission from the current landowner to make that crossing?
We, we circulated kind of several different options to show the access. And the current one, um, we do control and would have access, uh, would have approval from that property under the current layout we're looking at. Um, there have been other options floated that would require off-site easements, and we do not control that property.
I, I, I had a couple more, and, and so I was just looking at the, I guess it would be houses sixty-five and sixty-four. And there's a, a connector there. There seems to be like some, are those parking lines in front of house sixty-five? The, those. I'm not sure what that is, yeah.
That's, there's going to be on-street parking and the, um, the prior plan showed. Strike, parallel parking there, but, but frankly, that whole street is going to be parking on one side in terms of this way, so. I think really we want street parking on one side, not just in that.
Okay, so not just in front of house sixty-five where they're, so you just have constantly a parking spot in front of their house, okay, okay. And then my, my other question is why, I'm sorry, while I'm talking, but what is the, the space between house, uh, or excuse me, I guess it would be, um. Townhome ninety-eight, ninety-nine. Um, it says reserve A. Uh, what, what is that space between, um, ninety-eight, ninety-nine? Uh, on the, just green space? Okay.
There's three parking spaces, uh, right there, behind the trees. There, okay.
We, we opened up a little after there to get some pad and parking at that end of the kind of five day.
Where do people park if they want to get mail from the townhomes, cluster mailboxes?
That, that inside of that. I brown, inside of that road would be on-street parking, it would be signed for on-street parking there. That road, that five road will be wide enough to have parking on one side, it's from certain fleet, so. I didn't strike it, but it would be on-street parking, wide enough to park on that.
What was the reason you went from twenty-four to twenty-six feet on the private?
The fire department would definitely have gone for it.
We say without the additional open space, they meet the open space requirement? Additional open space isn't a term in our code.
No, it's not. They meet the twenty percent requirement without the additional open space, so they're at seven acres even.
The common open space?
Yes, the common open space, thank you.
All the amenities that were included in the last, in that minority, we've all, uh.
We just broke out the additional because it's additional, understanding it's not useful.
The open space is a reduction from the original plan though, based on that.
Well, it meets the minimum, while, while it meets the minimum, it's less than what has been previously approved, and I think that's the point. You were trying to make in the staff report.
What, what was the reduction?
You know, it's basically, I believe it was seven point four, and it went down to seven acres.
Uh, again, I believe part of that is the undersizing of the retention pond in the previously approved zoning. It was not correctly approved to take on the drainage and it's now sized properly as we've moved through engineering.
Common space doesn't account, I mean, you take things out like roads and stormwater facilities and. Slopes and areas that are greater than a certain amount of slope, is that?
If right-ofways, I'm not, I can't confirm the slope, but right-ofways, yes, but with the. I think what Molly's saying is with the retention pond getting greater, then it would reduce the green space because the pond itself isn't counted.
Did the density increase slightly?
Uh, we can both speak to that. It, it was always four point seven two. We just only went one decimal point over. The density is the same.
What was the reason to move the cluster mailboxes to the far east side of the property?
I, you know, I can't tell you how much discussion we had, I must say, to use on that segment, so. The, the reason that we, that we're flexible, by the way, but we like it here. There's generally people who are going to stop and leave their mail as they're coming off it. And I thought the way that this kind of worked out, if you go along first, then you kind of have to come back trying to get to your mail. So we wondered about public maintenance. We're not promoting or, or amenitizing the CBUs, like some big gallery space or some big public amenities. We've got plenty of that over here, it's the idea that you keep your mail and get along, it's not going to be a congestion point here. And that's why we like it more for the fun of the neighborhood than having it more in the middle.
Yes, it depends what area side you're coming from, right?
What's that?
It could be at the end of the neighborhood if you're coming from Sunbury Parkway.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we would be open to moving the CBUs back if that's something that the, the planning commission would require.
Yeah, I, I'm not thinking of it like a congregation space, I'm thinking more centrally located, um, and. Just the line of sight, if you can zoom out one notch there. You know, putting it right near a curve is, I don't know, you're gonna have cars stop there, right? And you're making a right turn if you're coming in, in the scenario that you explained, coming in from the east going west. There's cars parked there, I mean, you're taking a wider turn and you're making a right turn. CBUs are, I mean, you can just hover over it, Alex, it's fine, like, like CBUs are right there. I mean, this is just a suggestion, these, these are minor, but, um, there are things that we should be discussing. I, I don't want to be talking about mailboxes either, but, I mean, we're doing a full zoning amendment, um, for this right now. So it opens it up for further discussion.
I, you know, possibly, we will have, uh, other final engineering, other detailed plans, plenty of other opportunities to. Comment and adjust the plan.
We just want to give our staff who has to actually enforce those and, you know, it, it's better if we get it in the zoning text. Um, then we wait until a final development plan when, you know, it's, oh, well, we said twenty-five percent of. The materials are, need to be natural, and then they're covered by a vinyl fence, which leads me to my next discussion. Um, you got, you've got natural materials around the whole building, twenty-five percent. You've got, you've got natural materials around the whole building, twenty-five percent, I think. Is that fair? Townhomes, let's just start with townhomes. But then the exhibits or the elevations that I saw did not include any of the renderings with the white vinyl fence that's blocking all the natural materials. We saw a zoning exhibit that you had presented, it's, uh, I believe four dash ten. Yeah, tab four dash ten, where you've got the, an overhead view of what the fences look like. Which I personally regret approving in the first, um, zoning. And then you're putting them on the, what I would call like the front of the townhomes, but the front of the townhomes face the Sunbury Parkway. And all the natural materials are at the bottom of the plan. Of the elevations. And then you have vinyl fences in front of that, so it just. Sorry, I can't hear you.
This drawing, this exhibit is from the fires that still, we've got some people approved at that time, we included it in this one.
I know what you're saying. I said, I regret approving that. I was on the planning and zoning commission. I regret approving that. And now we're blocking all the natural materials that we're saying you need to enforce, like put it forward, right? I mean, it's cost for you and it completely defeats the purpose. You're putting a, a vinyl fence in front of the natural materials facing the Sunbury Parkway. I honestly think it's not going to look good. But I feel like I'm really commandeering this meeting, so I've got to pass the torch. Joe?
I have lots of issues with all the variances. Um, let's go with side yard setbacks. You, you're asking for a seven yard, seven foot side yard setback with the ability to, to have a two-foot cantilevered extension, um, which puts you at a five foot setback.
I think it's actually six and they're looking to go down to four.
Yikes.
With bay windows.
I did not approve the first one. We'll make that clear.
Yeah, that is true.
So, to ask more from me, not going to happen.
Let me, let me say this. None of the homes that we'll construct will have any type of cantilever.
You say that, but you're asking for it to be approved in the text.
It was already approved in.
I didn't approve it.
I understand that. I didn't know that. I didn't ask for it to be approved. So, we would not have any cantilever. We're not asking for anything that would be outside.
Anything else on setbacks?
Why there's a pause? I guess I'll follow you up on the fence. What, what was the reason behind the fence if there was already a natural barrier? Why the extra expense, I guess, to put up the fence and, and have it look? Because, because quite honestly, experiences with fences that I've had is they, they look fine for a while and then maintenance of them or wear and tear and they're hard to keep up, they're expensive to keep up. So, just curious why the addition to, that would block that view of the natural barrier.
There you go. Well, maybe you have the visual in your mind. The fence, as I understand it, again, not part of the original zoning. So, maybe others did not approve those fences either. That fence, as you see, is really designed just to create some type of privacy barrier. Running parallel to the lot line, parallel to the unit, between those that may have some porch furniture, patio furniture, alabaster. So, it really acted more as just a, a divider or some type of barrier in between. Uh, I have no problem getting rid of divide elements whatsoever. I believe this one running perpendicular or parallel with the parkway was used to buffer further, again, the residents that live there from the, from the traffic laws. That's why I assume they're, they're buffering. But to the mayor's point, if we're going to address up the rear elevations of the homes, so it's something attractive from Sunbury Parkway or future Sunbury Parkway, putting a vinyl, six-foot vinyl fence in along that area, this would not be very cool.
I appreciate.
If I was to propose anything, if, if any type of fencing were cool, I would limit it out to maybe some, uh, four feet of some type of iron or aluminum fence that could get some work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you know, on page six of the zoning text, uh, you've got a typo where you spell out the word ten, but in the parentheses, you've got a twelve.
While we're on, uh, questions or clarification on, I believe it's page nine of the zoning text. This is under subarea A, attached townhomes. And we're talking about minimum setbacks for the building. Side yard is either zero and I assume that means if sharing wall. Or twelve and a half feet from the side lot line, in other words, twenty-five feet apart. Okay, there is an asterisk next to that one, um, actually, excuse me, near. There's an aster, a double asterisk next to the rear, uh, yard setback and this is where I got a little bit confused. It says uncovered decks and patios shall be permitted to encroach in the side yard setback a maximum of ten feet. Is that supposed to be rear yard setback? Okay. Thank you. Also talks about accessory buildings. What did you have in mind for accessory buildings for fifteen feet? Is that the pavilion? For, this is in, under the townhomes, uh, subarea. That's for townhomes? Okay, thank you.
Would you be okay with eliminating the second sentence?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Just so you know, we've had lots of discussions the last couple of years about, you know, patio homes and basically decks and patios and things like that. But any accessory structures are, we haven't allowed. And then, uh, I must say, I missed that asterisk that you caught on the fourth and six feet is the most I will go. And, because I know we've, couple developers have tried five and I live in a development with five. And there is mud because the sun doesn't get between the buildings enough, between mud and mold and all that that gets in between there. So, six feet is the most I will go.
That's what we're talking about. These are the detached, single-family.
Yes. I'm talking about those two asterisks you got that snuck in on me on page fourteen, that we've been kind of talking about.
Subarea B, single-family patio homes, uh, regarding the side yard setbacks and there's two asterisks, one for the, um, side yard and one for, uh, rear yard.
How would we find with the side yards? And I understand most of these homes sites were fifty-two, fifty-five, product is forty. So, with the six and six, that should work out.
Any other comments from the commission?
A question about, um, parking spaces. We were kind of talking about it earlier in the townhome section. Uh, I understand from what I read that, uh, parking is permitted on one side of private street A, is that correct? Um, where is that going to be possible?
Yeah.
Where you're not a driveway emptying into the street? How many months have we talked about?
Correct, so you have a two-car garage and a two-car truck. So, we need the requirement for two per unit. From the visitor's standpoint, we've got, uh, the ability to on-street park here where we don't have the driveways. And we get like twenty-five or thirty spaces if we, if we fully naturalize all of that. And then we've got visitor parking here and here, thinking that you're starting to get a little bit, you know, away from this. So, we wanted to put some in, we want to go back in.
We know how many total spaces that comes out to approximately? How many townhomes? One hundred and seven?
Yeah, the plan before had fifteen spaces of visitor for the town. Then we have forty-one.
Okay, you're saying that's an improvement? Um, I'm seeing the townhomes on the far left of the page here. That's a, that's an awful long walk to those head-in spaces. Is, are we anticipating that the parking on both sides of the main uh, Kinnor Parkway is going to be used for townhome visitor parking?
I mean, it's, it's possible, it's public street, but, um, parking is a, is a luxury and we get as much as we can. But again, knowing that we've got four spaces per unit.
Certainly a luxury with lots this small. I agree.
And I'm not so sure you couldn't get some on-street parking just with the driveway spacing. It just feels like it's going to be tight.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any in front of that bank of townhomes. I don't see any on-street parking. I don't disagree. It's going to be around the, the circle or, uh, head-in spaces or on Kinnor Parkway. That doesn't seem like enough. On a Friday night, when people are visiting. Or Saturday afternoons when there's birthday parties. It seems like this is, this is, what I see here is max density. How many, how many thing we get in, not worry about the, the every, the everyday aspect of, once this is filled. You know, how congested is this really going to be with vehicles and, and, and transportation through the a twenty-seven, twenty-six foot wide, um, straightaway? I live on a straightaway. I know how fast the cars go and if there's parking, any parking, it's going to be inhibiting vision, vision. I'd like to see more parking available for visitors. It doesn't in, uh, include a significant walk, uh, to some of the distant properties.
Were you saying more? Are you saying one additional for every half of home?
I guess I, I read the section.
We go back to, again, maybe, maybe we're above the limits. The reason I say we're, this doesn't sound like this condition approved by any landmark. And we work for a plan that this condition may not have been approved. So, that's why I'm trying to understand when you go back to say, okay, what is, what is more? Is that we have one and a half, like two and a half spaces for every. We know, or, or we said we have two in the garage and two on the driveway, that's four. So, we want five for every. So, for the hundred and seven units.
I feel like this comment is more about distribution than it is about conversion. Probably we have more spaces than written in the plan, but it is feeling a little bit modern maybe on this end. Okay, I, I don't know, you could apply it all.
Okay. No, I, 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 actually, I, I, I see a number of potential issues, uh, just with density, um, of, of vehicles. I, I, I was reading in the, the, the section, let's see, one point oh six about on-street parking requirements, that each unit is actually only required to have two total units, but that can include the garage space. So, every, every home is going to have two garages. So, that, does that not mean that you can not reserve the two that are outside the home as two additional? And maybe you can't get cars into those where there's actually four spots available? I mean, is there a way that, um, we can lose those spots that are close to the street? Because I think the sidewalk is only on one side of this. Is that correct? So, I know in my neighborhood, sometimes the guys with the big duly pickup trucks parking, I can't get down the sidewalk because it's, it's too big to get in, all the way in the driveway and it won't fit in the garage. So, um, with, with sidewalks on only one side, it only takes one pickup truck to have people walking in the road.
We have twenty-five feet from the back of curves to the base of the curb. Or from the sidewalk to base of garage. So, you have a deeper front on the sidewalk side to accommodate that scenario of that twenty-five foot.
So, either way, from the front of the garage, I have twenty-five feet before somebody's trying to walk past the rear of the vehicle. Okay, thank you. In summary, I'd like to see more parking. I go to a lot of birthday parties, too many birthday parties and I'm the guy who's parking over here and walking a country mile or two just to, uh, try to find a way to get to where I got to get to. Are any of the parking spaces handicap designated? Or any, are any of the spots going to be designated for handicap accessible? Is that a requirement? I don't, I don't know the answer.
Yeah, we'll meet the requirement for that. It's one for twenty-five, two for fifty, so we probably have to sign.
So, that includes some of the ones that are going to be around the loop?
Okay, so. Uh, well, that's obviously, that's a detail I have to do.
A question on street trees and the townhomes. Is, is the reason that you're, uh, the space, tell me, tell me about the, like you did, what you did. Is it just because they would be in the driveway? Um, I saw that they're only located in between buildings. That's a hundred feet without a tree or so, about hundred feet, maybe more.
Certain was standard spacing, I think, applied to both public street and a private street. And when you look at the amount of space available, plus whatever violation landscaping is going to happen in front of those units, it's going to be all a lot. So, you, you can see from the landscape plan, we're proposing street trees essentially between the buildings we've got on the face of. Instead of trying to cram them into through the driveways in front of the building.
Think so. Are, just so, so you're aware, our street tree code, um, I think you already know this, but, you know, we don't put them in between the sidewalk and the street now. So, there, it, like, there's been developments where we've said a street tree can, can be counted if you're planting it in the front yard of a townhome or a house. Not, not like up against the house, but I'll say like more up against the sidewalk.
Like for the, for ten, we've got two, you know, hollow tree, sidewalk, looking high, sidewalk, it's fixed to be there where it's looking far in the ground. So, they, uh, we have a lot of, uh, not completely decided on the version of the street. You're talking about the town?
Yeah, I'm talking about the townhomes. And I know you're meeting the code. I'm, I'm not disputing that. You're replacing more than you're removing, so I, I acknowledge that.
We, we like that, Russ. We want to put them in.
I mean, from a traffic perspective, it slows traffic down. It makes the street a little bit more narrow. It's nice to walk. I mean, there's, there's all the, like, the things that go along with street trees. I, those buildings seem large, uh, in terms of like six, six units, I think, and that's, I mean, give me a order of magnitude. How long are those buildings? Hundred?
Each are twenty-six feet wide.
Okay.
Each of the, I'm sorry, each, each of the homes are twenty-four.
Okay, alright, so it's about a hundred fifty.
On the largest or the most coupled homes, yes. But several of them are five. The other, the other issue there, in addition to just the driveway into the sidewalk, because the, we told you the force is sort of water, I think, you know, once.
Are the garage doors going to be wiped?
Oh, we read the code.
I read the code too. I'm, I was interested to see an elevation that met that.
I saw the slight elements that need the minimum of elements that must be, to meet the architectural requirements. Are you, is all common? Are, if we is ordering that out on, and those types of things now. Also, pretty some type of hardware on the homes themselves, an architectural style around shores. Whether they be farmhouse or that, it also be used. It was the, the, the desire for the garages to be painted to model the house that we might be applying.
Okay, I, I, that's not what I'm asking for. I was just wondering. I was reading our code. I think it basically says, don't paint them white, if I'm mistaken, not mistaken.
I understood it, it was to be, because I understood that there was a menu of options. And you were kind of having a minimum of four of that menu applied to each elevation. One of the menu items was the garage door not being one.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Well, I will do give you a compliment uh. Because on the townhomes now, one of the things that we had asked and we hadn't seen the final uh. Elevations was we wanted more architectural differences and it didn't have to be a lot, but I see. Taken that into consideration. So I appreciate that. If you don't consideration um your proposed emergency driveway through reserve E, which is listed as open space. Does that take away any of their usable open space having a driveway going through it?
I think they're calling that additional open space.
Nope, that's common open space, reserve E. Yeah.
I think it would. I agree.
Well.
Just don't like the idea.
Thought of me that 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 it should be plenty of lives, maybe asphalt, maybe solid effective. So it was made an interesting fact that it's kind of like a little bit. Part of beings within the focus base if we look at it.
I just don't feel that the proposed emergency access does what we want it to do.
I don't think it does. I know I've I've tried to get out of traffic there before.
I mean, that that intersection is already a nightmare.
It's so close to a light, which that's why I'm surprised. I don't know.
That upset shouldn't even be there.
Has that passed engineering review? I know B S T and G said it meets their requirement, but.
We did not do an engineering review or traffic study for for any of that. It was the only review was for B S T and G.
Are there any other comments? I'm not trying to cut you off. I just want to make sure. Are any other comments? The applicant is requesting uh to table. Is there anybody that wishes to table this?
I moved to table uh the amendment to the approved plan Kinnor Crossing.
Okay, we got a motion on the table to table.
A second.
Second by Mr. Grumney. Discussion. Local. Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Yeah, Ms. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Stotman?
Yes.
Mr. Gokanour? Right. See, thank you. Motion table?
Thank you.
All right, if you're onto the visitors section, are there any visitors that would like to speak with the planning and zoning commission this evening? Come on up. If you don't mind, uh step up to the microphone. Um you might want to hold the microphone there. And then if you can state your name and your address, and we'll limit it to three minutes.
My name is Jill Drexel. I live at eight oh eight Cheshire Road, it's under how four three zero seven four, and I'm in the arrival. However, I knew this was coming in. Excuse me, allergies. When I bought my property and I thought it was fine. And I don't understand why you're questioning the um thing on the Cheshire Road. It's a very narrow stretch. It goes over a ravine. And in case you haven't seen all the signs on the freeways that say bridges freeze before the roadway and somebody comes out there. We could have accidents or they could slide into the houses. It's a very narrow space there. Why would you want them to put a road there? It doesn't make sense to me. It's an accident looking for someplace to happen. And I live, I'm one of the houses they might slide into. So not crazy about that. And as far as the fencing is concerned, who owns the fencing? Around the property? The white vinyl that you're protesting so much about. Who owns it? Does the company that builds the houses, do the residents that they're in the back of their property? Does the government own them? Who owns them? Who's responsible for maintenance?
I agree with asking this question. I just want to let you know the public uh participation portion of this, as you speak to the commission, typically there's not a dialogue. So if you're expecting an answer.
Yeah, I just want to know who's going to maintain them because you're saying we want them to be natural stuff. Well, natural stuff needs maintenance. Wood needs painting every two or three years. And if you want them to look crappy from the street, that's the way to go. If they're going to be maintained, then. The bottom line is go with something that doesn't need maintenance, which vinyl falls into that category. Because I'm old and I don't want to paint. Of course, I'm, that's not my property either. But on the other hand. For those hundreds of houses and stuff that are going in there, the people who have those behind them. So if everybody paints it a different color or whatever happens to the wood or whatever's natural could be a problem. So I just want you to be aware of that. And as I said, the exit onto Cheshire. As far as emergency exit is concerned, if people needed to leave in an emergency, like a bomb went off or something, they can just walk across the ravine. The deer do it all the time. There are deer in my backyard pretty much every night. Ask my dog. He'll tell you. Well, he doesn't talk a lot, but he parts. So.
That's three minutes. Thank you.
That's another thing that can go over that the the streets are talking about.
Thank you.
So anyway.
Welcome to the community. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we're on to the next visitor. Would anybody else like to speak with the planning and zoning commission? Anybody else like to speak with the planning and zoning commission? All right. Thank you. All right, we are on to. Motion to approve the minutes from February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. We're looking for a motion to approve. Mr. Gokanour?
Second.
Second by Mr. Grumney. Discussion. Local. Mr. Gokanour?
Yeah.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford? Ms. Stotman?
Yes.
Six A's motion approved. All right, we are on to the zoning report. Out.
Thank you, miss. Uh so zoning report, we have, um I know I've been updating you guys um. Not too intently, but on the permitting software that we've been looking at, that went through um finance committee and council, and it has been approved. So we are going to be implementing a new permitting software. So it will be, I'll probably have updates for you over time, but we're slowly going to be learning it, implementing it, and kind of learning new things from it. So hopefully it'll make us um a little more organized, a little more timely, a little more accurate with all of our permits, and then make it a little bit easier to display them to public or get those public requests out as well. Um walked and drove around uh city for looking at conditions with the weather being nice, it's easier to walk around and starting to check on grass and all that. We issued um two violation warnings. One was to a company, one to a resident. Uh this month, if you didn't look at the permits issued, we did have a lot of permits issued this month, a lot of them being new builds, but a lot of. Uh we had some solar, some pool, just a lot of lot going around with the weather starting to take a turn here. And then we did have a lot of election signs come up. Most of them were compliant. Uh not really too many that I had to pull. I had forgotten a couple of community contacts as far as that goes. So they're usually pretty good about emailing me, calling me and saying, hey, is this a good spot? So we're getting a little better about that as well. So total of thirty-five new zoning certificates, twenty-five of them being new builds, which puts our year to date at forty-four. So nine greater than last year, which was our best year of the last eight. And then um. Aside from that, that is all I have. Any questions for our zoning reporter zoning goes?
Okay. Any questions for a zoning officer? Any comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh we're on to discussion new business. Mr. Stotman?
Uh nothing there.
All right. Ms. Crawford? All right. Ms. Miller? Mr. Grumney? Mr. Gokanour? All right, one thing I wanted to mention, um I've talked to Alex and Daryl via email today. One thing, I I was looking at this through the residents' eyes, trying to get information for public hearings and zoning exhibits. You know, this commission gets uh access to exhibits on one drive and typically get them uh the Friday before. And um. You know, if new things are coming on, we're notified if uh there's new things that we need to review. But when I went out and was just trying to find information, I it was challenging for me. So for example, I could see the agenda, but I couldn't see the supporting information that you and I have access to. Um I I don't know that I'm asking for. A motion of approval right now, but I think we need to give uh Alex and our zoning uh team some guidance on. What are our expectations to make information available to the public? Obviously, everything you and I have up here is public record, but. It 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 should be easy for a resident to go out and say, okay, I want to go to the planning and zoning commission meeting on this day. And I can go and pull up all the supporting information related to it, whether it's. Public notices or zoning exhibits and things like that. So um. A- a- anybody else want to chime in or?
Hundred percent in favor.
Okay, good deal. All right.
It'd be nice to even go to our code and be able to search for like fencing. I mean, I've been on commission forever and I still can't find stuff.
Yeah.
I had to go through the whole thing, you know, I mean.
I have, I did find um a PDF searchable document that we approved last year that for the first time I actually saw it today. And it's searchable. Um I think it's two hundred and eighty-four pages. I can send you the link, but to your point, I mean, that should be like.
You should be able to go.
On the zoning page or on the planning and zoning page, like landing page, here's all of our zoning code. Um so I think we're on to a theme here. Obviously, um. Want to hear input from staff, and I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Oh, we've already discussed.
Okay.
We kind of have a plan of attack already. So I'll kind of touch on what me and Daryl talked about uh for you guys. You know, the zoning ordinance is on the website on the zoning page, the searchable one that the mayor talked about. If you go to planning and zoning, it'll say twenty twenty-three zoning ordinance is on there. You can hit control F in there and search. For whatever whatever code you would want to find.
That's actually where I found it today.
Couldn't find it.
So I can. But we can make it, I can make it more visible and a little more, a little more prominent on the web page. And uh me and Daryl were discussing, we're going to start ta- kind of taking the council approach when it comes to planning and zoning. So we'll have where you can click the agenda item on the website. We're going to start filling that in with materials from the zoning. So it'll be very similar to how council works. You click the agenda, you can click all the items related to it, just for, as you said, clarity in that. We think that'll be best for everybody. Especially since people are having a hard time navigating the website as it is. Just make it clear enough for them.
Great.
I did have a a couple of things on that. Uh one of the things is. We need to make sure that while you're going this direction, that you're talking to your records commission. Because all of that needs to change on that. And you need to know how you need to treat it versus it's online and on paper. That's a a big thing. And we, if we're going down this route, which I totally support, we want it to be. The least manual labor involved, you know? That's one of the things I was excited to see about the new software because. As many other reports that you can get out of that, instead of doing Excel and some of those things, that's where I would see. Because as we continue to grow, that's going to be a a big area. So.
Yeah, I I guess I would add to that. I completely agree that it needs to be a relatively simple process for staff to be able to get it up there. Uh from an efficiency perspective, I think one of our challenges. Um there are a couple of places on the website where you've got some planning documents. Keeping those current because planning documents change from time to time. Yeah, it's been a bit of a challenge. So we're trying to a new approach on that. But what I would say is that I I don't think the um, I don't think the current model that we use even for the council is the most efficient approach. I I think there are other ways to do agenda building. Uh there is, there are other software products that do that, including the one that we have Civic Plus. So I think we just need to dig a little bit deeper into how that works. Um again, it's it's available to the public. Um you you know, it's a one kind of uh it's it's a, it's a, it's a place where all of the documents can be retained over some period of time. Easily searchable, easy easily accessible, easily managed from a staff perspective. So I don't think the first step is the easiest approach, but we're going to do that to making sure that they're public. But I think longer term, we want to look at the, again, the the agenda management software.
Now, being able to interconnect the things. One of the things also with the new software and as you change through that. Do talk to the other departments because uh. Some of those might change the audit uh for your financial reasons. Uh the paperwork might change and not have all the right. Information and you need to make sure that's there. And uh one of the things that I have found uh with zoning is uh. The uh software engineers on those products uh sometimes forget that uh. They make changes to uh things that are financial in there. Uh and I'll just throw out an example where they took uh receipt numbers when it's consecutive, they just randomly excited. Well, that's a big flag, you know? You need to be aware of how your software is affecting the other departments.
Yeah, fair point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other uh newer unfinished business? I just want to reiterate, uh if you were here for the state route three uh commercial development, specifically also known as the gas station product. Project, um there will be a public meeting. Public as in not led by the city, but led by the developer here, six P M, April sixteenth. Lastly, I want to say a special thanks to staff. I know there was a uh quite a bit of work done. On this particular night, anytime you have two public hearings, I mean, a lot of man and woman hours going into that. Thank you so much. We've got folks in the crowd that have helped us out. Um. So thank you very much, Alex in particular. Great report. And. Good work. All right, with that said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gokanour. Discussion. Local. Mayor St. John?
Yeah.
Mr. Gokanour?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Stotman?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Six A's, meeting adjourned.